Well, that's -- good morning. That's amazing. I just have to think about the gavel and you quiet down. So, good morning, everyone. I'm not going to quite call to order because before I do that, under the standing rules, I'm going to make an adjustment in the agenda. In resolutions, I'm going to move 9D up to 9A and then bump the rest back down. So with that change noted, I will call us to order. This is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Welcome all, and we will start with the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Brevi.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Boujack.
President.
Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 members present, zero absent. We are in full force, and you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much for our invocation. I will call in Commissioner Hennessy. Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to introduce Ryan Walkus, who's the Executive Director of the Bridge Street Ministries to provide today's invocation. This agency works to equip and empower our youth so that they will become the future leaders that this area, that the city, needs and deserves. And their perseverance, teaching perseverance, giving skills, is all important to what the Bridge Street Ministries does. Ryan is a graduate of Calvin College in Civil Engineering and worked successfully in that field before turning to the Bridge Street and the ministry area there. He and his wife and five children live on Bridge Street, and I'm glad to welcome him to provide our prayer for the morning.
Thank you for those timed words, Commissioner Hennessy. As a lifelong resident of Kent County and a 20-year resident in Commissioner Hennessy's district, I want to thank you all for your service to the people of Kent County, and I'm honored to offer today's invocation. In this exciting time of increasing economic vibrancy and seemingly endless potential, I'm reminded of our collective responsibility to continue to work toward a region where all people have the opportunity to flourish. It was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. who once said, "Somewhere, we must come to see that human progress never rolls in on the wheels of inevitability. It comes through the tireless effort and the persistent work of dedicated individuals who are willing to be coworkers with God. Without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally to the primitive forces of social stagnation." With that, let us pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, today is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. I pray that you will grant to these men and women great wisdom to govern, great humility to serve, great courage to do what is right, and the perseverance to labor until the task is complete. May your kingdom come. May your will be done. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you for that invocation. All right, we'll move to the next item, which is Special Order of Business. And I'm sure one of my colleagues will point out that we have three Special Orders of Business under a rule that allows for two. So I could have condensed two of these into one, but I decided to just keep all three there, and I'll take the hit later. So please see me. All right, let's start with Rich McKeegan. I think that -- and Rick Wynn are here to talk about the CAA. I'm sorry, Grand Rapids Kent County Arena Authority.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. We're going to do a brief, as instructed, brief presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. Can you talk into the microphone because this is broadcast?
Okay. I'll start over. Thank you for having us. We're going to do a brief presentation on the CAA and the performance in the last year. So if you want to -- you want to move it?
IT is right behind you.
Is that me?
There you go.
There you go.
What do we press?
Oh, so just the arrows here should still be. I don't know why I needed to press.
All right. So this is the CAA structure. We are a board of seven. I'm the current chair. Two of the board members are county appointees. I am one. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. But it is, you can see, the CAA represents is an authority. We have an executive committee, finance operations, community inclusion group, and a liaison committee. Rich?
Our fiscal year is just about to close. There's a lot of numbers here, a lot of information. I'll whip through it quickly. I think the key here is the continued strength of events at the arena and the different types at the arena. From an attendance perspective, numbers are still very, very strong, continue to be. Some of the highlights from the last fiscal year, specifically reference the Great Lakes Invitational Hockey Tournament, something we were able to secure from the Detroit area a couple of years ago over the Christmas holidays. It's been very, very successful. Specific note, Billboard, one of the industry rags, has got Vananal Arena ranked as number six venue in North America for venues of its size, 10,000 to 15,000 seats. I believe in the last 28 years, we've been ranked no lower than sixth in that category. Our food and beverage division at the arena does strong business. Again, noted, $1.3 million donated to charity during calendar year '23. That number's at 658 as of end of April. So we're looking at getting to that number again. These are primarily nonprofit organizations that work concession stands. In the theater, once again, very strong. We're very lucky to have four arts tenants, opera, ballet, symphony, and Broadway. Community our size to have four thriving arts tenants is very rare these days. Attendance continues to be very strong in this facility as well. Some of the highlights, once again, Billboard. That actually, there's a typo there. It's not a capacity range of 5,000 or less, but 2,500 or less, which our capacity, 2,400, but number 13 worldwide. This type of stuff is noted by agents and promoters in New York, LA, Nashville. So it's important for us to have a significant place on those lists to continue to get as much business as we can. In the convention center, once again, the event days, very, very strong. Attendance continues to be very, very strong. Between the three venues, you're probably looking at about 720 event days and about a $1.5 million attendees. Some of the highlights in the convention center, very diverse and varied offerings in that facility, probably less or more under the radar screen as compared to the ticketed events in the other venues. We're very proud of what the buildings do in the community relative to donating tickets, donating prizes. We have a community inclusion group, which serves as our diversity, equity, inclusion arm. Been very pleased and proud that that's been around for 15, 16 years and doing really strong work. Some upgrades during the year. Some of it behind the scenes, some of it very, very public, like the new carpeting in the Skywalk and the new lighting in the ballroom. Rick can talk about the new facilities coming?
Yeah. So hopefully, everyone's aware of the amphitheater, which has broken ground at this point. The stack for this venue is pretty well in place. So we're excited. Opening, hopefully, May of '26. And then soccer. So soccer, the site has been chosen. The land is pretty much in play. What we need at this point is all of us registered voters to please vote yes on August 6th for the increase in the excise tax, which will fully support our ability to construct this soccer stadium and get the team. So this was pretty brief, but this is a lead behind. So in the future, if there are any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We'll be happy to answer them.
Great. Well, thank you for the short presentation on a lot of issues. So we'll see if there's any questions or comments from Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Good morning, and thank you for the wonderful presentation. Do we have enough hotel rooms to support all this activity? Looks like a lot going on and a lot of people coming, and I don't know that we have enough room for everyone to stay overnight.
Currently, yes. As a hotelier, I could tell you yes. But for the future, we will need some more rooms. But the one thing that -- everything that's covered in this presentation generates hotel rooms. So you're accurate, and it's a good question.
And I think, too, the other piece is the Destination Asset Study that was commissioned by Grand Action, Experienced Grand Rapids, and the CAA a few years ago, did identify the need for a new convention hotel, a new full-service convention hotel. The CAA had picked that priority up, and obviously, with the pandemic, backburnered it. Now that these projects are to the stage they are, we are moving that project forward. Not saying it's happening, saying moving it forward to look into current conditions to see if it's still warranted.
And are we somehow encouraging and inviting hoteliers to come here to do that?
The study itself will only assess what the need is. So -- and if it warrants investment. Relative to private industry coming into the community, I think Experienced Grand Rapids gets inquiries on a somewhat regular basis, and I know collectively, the community is very supportive to provide information and insights to the market so that those private developers can assess whether it's worthwhile to invest or not.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Burl?
Again, thank you. Just the impact this has on our community is huge. Economically, do you have the numbers kind of off the top of your head or close to it, what all of our -- all the items you just talked about, how they impact our community?
We've, over the life of the CAA, we've commissioned two economic impact studies. The most recent was done by the University of Michigan Sport Consulting Group, and that was maybe three years ago. That estimated the economic impact from the buildings combined to be about $60 million a year. When you factor in the number of years those venues have been around, it's about $1 billion total. So the investment, in my opinion, is absolutely warranted, and that is direct impact. That is not indirect impact. The other piece, and it is a public document, we can provide it if you'd like. The other piece is, the University of Michigan study also looked at property taxes and property values and demonstrated that property values relative to the proximate location to the venues went up significantly more than those further away to the venues.
Wonderful. Thank you. Still fun going to Vananal like it's brand new, you know? I mean, so great job and all those facilities and keeping all those places up for us, too.
Appreciate it. I really encourage a two beer minimum. So thank you very much.
Well, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not -- oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Oliver King. No, Oliver King, you go first, and then I'll.
Thank you, Chair. This may be a crazy question, but is this encouraging more of a walking community? Because when I think about parking and traffic and all of that, has that been -- I'm sure that's been factored in, too. And how are you addressing that?
I guess if you're talking about the two new venues, part of Grand Action's directive to the architects were to assess access, both pedestrian and vehicular. So that absolutely is part and parcel of the work being done on both facilities. I think the walkability factor continues to be a priority for the success of the venues. And quite frankly, Commissioner, in my opinion, the thriving community has allowed the Vananal Arena to continue to be so successful. And when you look at other communities that either have or are trying to do these entertainment districts, we had that 30 years ago when we opened -- 28 years ago when we opened the arena. It just wasn't named that yet. So the walkability and the activity downtown causes people to be more apt to go to events at the Vananal Arena and DeVos Performance Hall than not. And I think that benefit has been realized, and that's why the priority of putting these other two venues downtown has been very, very key amongst the stakeholders.
Yeah, I would add, too, that Grand Action, CAA, we're all working closely with Mobile GR. So that, you know, that comes into play as well.
Because I'm assuming that there would be some conversations, like with the West Side. The West Side is really going to get hit hard when we look at issues around that. So thank you for answering my question.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for coming. And I paused about asking this question because I want to make sure I'm asking it to the right folks. But we've asked it to -- in our conversations around the lodging excise tax, there, you know, I'm looking at the eligible expenses in the law, and, you know, they're very explicit about bonding for facilities. And one of the more open-ended one is the promotion and encouragement of tourist and convention business in the county or local government. Can you provide any examples of when we've used lodging excise tax revenue for that beyond our work with Experienced Grand Rapids? Do we know kind of -- have we been able to identify uses beyond that under that Section D of the law?
I don't think that would be under our purveyance.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. No worries. Thanks.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments, thank you, gentlemen, again, for all the work that you do, and certainly for your presentation. And I'm sure we're going to hear back from you guys over the course of this year on a number of occasions. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Experienced GR, Doug Small. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be back.
Don't mind me.
She knows I need help. Good morning. I'll make this quick. I'm not going to go through a lot of marketing, which we do a lot of times, just because of the time. But we are going to talk about the results of your investment in the visitor industry. I wanted to also give a -- I have a couple of slides because I know there's a lot of new commissioners that maybe aren't quite familiar with us. So our mission's quite simple, as you can see there. This is our structure, a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit private corporation. You see the number of staff members. Those 18 part-time staff members are at the airport. We provide visitor services at the airport. So if you see people in light blue jackets walking around out there, those are Experienced Grand Rapids staff that work through a contract we have with Gerald Ford International Airport Authority. And then we have a great agreement. You'll hear from Mike in a second with the Sports Commission. And I think Commissioner Wooden, that might answer your question, that they get some of the funding for their promotion also. And 11,000 rooms throughout the county. Public-private partnership is strong. I'm going to show you here in a second that where the majority of our revenue stream is from. We have a hotel assessment. It's 4% of the room revenue that comes through our hotel community in the county. That's a private agreement with our hotels that they pay us after billing them on a monthly basis. We thank you again for your commitment to us in the lodging excise tax. And we -- hopefully, you'll see with the numbers next. I think it's being returned handsomely. I mentioned the Gerald Ford International Airport that pays us to provide those services, and then a couple of other sources of revenue. Here are the numbers. Just it's continued to be terrific. I left out 2021 for a reason, but 2019 was such a superb year, and then we came flying out of the pandemic in 2022. You can see the number of rooms sold countywide, and then we broke another record in 2023. I'm happy to report that through May of this year, we are about 8% ahead of last year in rooms sold. So we're on a very good track for another record year. The same is true for Kent County hotel room revenue, which is where you get your lodging excise tax from. You can see the tremendous growth there. And through May, we're up about 7.5% over last year in hotel room revenue. So budget growth, the only way our budget grows is filling more hotel rooms. So you can see the great climb that we've had over the last several years, and it's good to see. And again, after reporting where we are through May, I think we'll be going up again next year in a decent amount. And I'll end it with this. The lodging excise tax proposed increase, if you use 2023 year-end numbers, would give you about $7.8 million more in tax for your use. So it is a decent amount of extra revenue that's going to come your way. And that's my report.
Wow, you were even shorter than Rich. Great, thank you. Questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Can you tell me who's responsible for the LPGA event out at Blyfield? Is that -- I know it's a consortium of a lot of different groups.
Born out of Meyer, and that's why it's called that. They're not just a name sponsor. I don't know if you know Kathy Cooper, but she just retired about a year ago. But she's with Meyer, and she's the tournament director.
You work on that, too? Does your group help?
We volunteer. We're asked to volunteer. I think Mike the same. I know volunteered this year. But I love the game of golf, so it's not hard to get me out there.
That, to me, that is the finest event we do in West Michigan. I think from beginning to end, well, I should say one of. I know there's a lot of great ones, but I'm blown away. I can't imagine a better-run event anywhere in the country than what that is.
The players voted at their best stop on tour because they're taken care of so well.
Has to be. It's just incredible. From the time you get to where they load the buses up, the friendliness, the costs, family-friendly costs, you know, because a lot of people can't afford to do stuff like that.
Right.
And they take care of families, and I just love that. And I hope all the events that we bring in could have that mindset because they're successful. To me, charge a little less, but they're going to make it back tenfold just because of the way people are treated. So I like that model.
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, great to have you here. Do you have a sense, roughly speaking, of what percentage of our rooms are conference rooms versus tourism rooms? And the follow-up to that, so you know I'm asking that, is there interest or capacity to increase the conferences that we're bringing to our town?
Yeah. This is a unique county. I've worked at five destinations. It's very unique in that we have probably 12 to 15 hotels that I would call meeting-style hotels throughout the county. That's a small number when you consider there's about 100 hotels countywide. So a lot of limited-service properties that thrive on corporate transient business, which is down, has not fully come back from the pandemic. Where we've made it up is increased leisure business, which helps those small hotels, sports you're going to hear through youth and amateur sports. Is there capacity? Certainly. I think Rich mentioned the Destination Asset Study. I think they said the expansion of the convention center was sort of a secondary goal because there was still capacity there. It was just the lack of that one extra convention hotel they felt would allow us to be more competitive for more pieces of business. And we probably, not sure it's going to happen, but we could use another large convention-style hotel in one of our suburbs. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Grant.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to understand, if I'm understanding this correctly, I serve on the Board of West Michigan Works, and one of the newest trade council is the Hospitality Trade Council. And you are involved in that? Is that correct?
Yeah. We actually, I never thought in my career as a marketing person I'd get involved in workforce development, but we were sort of forced to during the pandemic where our partners were hurting. And so we locked arms with West Michigan Works, and we're forming currently right now. I think we've got the list of people to serve on that industry council to help us create buzz in our industry or for our industry, to fill -- to help our partners fill the positions that they need. So it's been a wonderful experience thus far.
Okay. Early days yet, right? Is that true?
Yeah. We just last week actually selected those that are served on the council. So we're on our way.
Great. Well, I look forward to hearing how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. First, thank you for the comments on promotion uses. The second, my one question, you just kind of mentioned that meeting hotel occupancy is down, leisure hotel occupancy is up. Have we seen that that's fairly consistent nationwide? And if so, is that -- is it worth kind of revamping that part of the Destination Asset Study involving the convention hotel concept if meeting hotels or conventions and conferences are in decline nationally?
Yeah, I probably said that a little too quick. I'd say that our business for the convention center in downtown, which is traditional convention, if you will, not a corporate meeting, is probably slightly up. But it's overall corporations, when I mentioned they're down with just their individual travel, also aren't meetings frequently anymore either. So that's taken it down a little bit. But I think there's still, and Rich and the CAA know this, I still think if we get another convention-style hotel in the city, we can maximize all the properties, not just, you know, those downtown. I can tell you, I get weekly reports on the entire county, that when we have a large convention in downtown, the entire county gets elevated, and they can also drive rate. So it's a beautiful story if you're looking for revenue.
No, I appreciate that elaboration and going a little more into detail. Thank you.
You bet. All right. If no one else, oops, Commissioner Antor. Yeah, that's number two.
I know. Just a quick one, because Doug, you touched on some convention-style hotel. Is it possible to come up with a convention center with a hotel built around it? Because when I hear convention-style hotel, it's still not enough space for bigger consumer events.
You're talking about Commissioner --
Something to replace.
Something that would be out in the suburbs.
Yeah, something to replace, like a Delta Plex or something.
The most popular that you find in suburban locations, meeting-style hotels, have a either a large amount of meeting space contained, or they're -- they build it as a hotel and conference center. So nothing that would be used for trade shows and such, but more for meetings.
You knew you weren't going to get through here without me beating you up about trade show space. We're lacking in that area.
I, once we've lost the Delta Plex, it was that we need something to replace it.
I'm here by the squeaky wheel, so I'm just going to keep saying that. And I think everybody knows we have a shortage of that. And somewhere along the line, it'd be nice to have a plan where we can bring something like that and then put a hotel on that property, too. So.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. If that's it, thank you, Doug, for your presentation. Thank you for all your work, of course, at Experienced GR. And we look forward to hearing more updates.
Great. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Third, but certainly not least, Mike Gusweiler here for the Sports Commission.
Good morning, Chair Stack, Commissioners. It's great to be here. We like to use sport terms so I get the back cleanup. Happy to do it. One thing you should know, I know it's unique to have three Special Orders of Business through organizations. We do all work very well together to bring new business into our community. We coin it the three-legged stool, and it's unique to this destination. You should be proud that you've got organizations like this doing good work. Jumping into it, I'll just talk a little bit about the structure. Doug Small hit on public-private partnerships. The West Michigan Sports Commission, we're in our 17th year. We were born out of a public-private partnership. Really, it was this body that helped drive our creation. And you did that because we're an economic generator through sports tourism, but we add to the quality of life, as we know that sports do. We're structured with a board of 15 members. We have two of your Commissioners, Commissioner Teal and Commissioner Brevi, on our board. We're happy to have them. They contribute greatly, as well as our other members. We have an advisory council as well, and that just brings a cross-section of other community members that are passionate about what we're doing to the table and expanding our network. And our staff has grown over our 17 years. A good-looking team in the last row here is our talented staff. I'm fortunate to have them. As I go through this presentation, they really are the significant work behind me as the voice person, making the impact that we're having in our community. We also have a very robust intern program that has grown over the years. We have hit nearly every college and university throughout the state and then some. You see it from our 2024 interns here that range from Michigan State University to the University of Michigan. You see it from our 2024 interns here that range from Michigan State, Grand Valley, Davenport, even reach out to Clemson University, somebody that lives here, but of course goes to school in Clemson. And we're receiving great recognition, again, on behalf of the talent of our team and our work. We were at our Industry Trade Association in April and received Sports Commission of the Year because of the work that we're doing in this community and through this county, but also being recognized by our peers in the work that we do. And just summarizing sports tourism and impact that it's grown to, it's over a $50 billion industry when we talk youth, adult amateur sports, and just amateur. We're not bringing professional into that. And it's the spending that is brought into these communities that's considered new spending. Without these events, these dollars don't exist, and that's significant to remember. Just a sampling of some events in 2024 on the 24 calendar. We've grown to well over 100 events on our event calendar. These are some of them. They range from adult women's bowling through the state and 4,400 participants that went from February to May to youth cheer and spirit and dance competitions, youth wrestling, as well as pickleball. You can't mention what we do without mentioning the growth of pickleball. It's real. And professional disc golf will be holding our second world championships, this being the amateur world championships. We hosted the master world championships years ago. We're happy to have PDGA back. And then some events that we're going after with our partners and trying to bring more impactful events into our community, again, range across the board. We work closely with Mary Freebed Wheelchair and Adaptive Sports and trying to push more adaptive sports into our community. And actually, while this is on our prospective events, it should be moved over to events that we've secured. Move United, which is a national adaptive sports entity for both youth and adults, and will bring about 1,000 people into our community in July of '25 and '26 will be coming in. In fact, some of the team members and myself will head down to Birmingham, Alabama, do attendance building and welcome them into our community a year ahead of time. Esports, I see my friend Dee Jones over here. We work with Dee quite a bit to promote esports. He's a force to be reckoned with. You know that through public comment. Law enforcement Torch Run is a significant conference that actually is held in major destinations. Atlanta was their last location, working with our partners, again, Experienced Grand Rapids. They are looking at us for their conference in '26, a significant fundraiser to Special Olympics. And then NCAA, the portal opens every three to four years. We bid each year with our partners locally. We have to find a host institution, and this will be the third time we're going after that D1 with this time Western Michigan University to try and make our downtown campus a thriving campus around March Madness, going after men's basketball in '28, but also women's regionals in '27. We have three primary entities. I touched on our main mission, which is attracting statewide, regional, national events into our community. We also run a signature event, our Meyer State Games in Michigan, celebrating 15 years this year. This past weekend was our main weekend. We are upwards of 40 different sports in our summer games. We held 20 last weekend, or over 20. We do opening ceremonies. We bring former Olympians in for opening ceremonies. We light a cauldron, and we kick off the games. And of course, we are always pleased when any of you can make it out, both to enjoy the celebration of sport, but see the smiles on on these kids and their families' faces. Collectively, 23 stats showed both our winter and summer games, they have 60 sports, over 3 million in visitor spending, excuse me, and 8,700 athletes that come from all over the state. We're hitting nearly every county throughout the state of Michigan. Numbers around our Meyer Sports Complex in its 10th year. This was, again, a public-private partnership to build this sports park so that we could move the needle on more visitors coming into our community, but also serves as an asset for our community, for local clubs and leagues to come and play. But 21 to 22 tournaments generally on weekends that are attracting people from all over the Midwest into our community and spending their dollars here, and it's significant, those dollars each and every year. So collectively, it's a 16-year impact, and these numbers show the benefit and the reason why we were formed. Over 1,200 events, nearly $650 million of visitor spending that helps support our small businesses and our labor and help that grow, the number of hotel room nights generated, and the number, more importantly, of what comes back to the lodging tax, over $3 million. We realize it will always be our mission to impact our local community through sports tourism and bringing these dollars into our community. We also see, and our team has done a great job of having a grant process to support local programming, to ensure that we're building up our own community, that we are ensuring that sports is available for all to play. And we actually put a little bit more effort into this and a little more marketing around it and coined it the Victory Lap Community Fund. What we want to do with this fund beyond just putting some of our own dollars into it is, is get some of these major events that come into our community to be willing to leave a legacy. We give a lot to ensure that we're hosting these events and that they're successful, and many times they want to leave a legacy. And so we're hopeful that we can build up this fund. But this shows some of the organizations that we've supported and the work that they do. And one of them in particular was just celebrating Juneteenth. We worked with Village 99 and the Storehouse to give away 100 pair of shoes to needy families. We also are in the midst of our newest strategic plan, not going into depth on this, but covering some of the key points. Now, it's really about working with community partners and ensuring that we can drive more business into our community. And typically, it's around infrastructure. It's building the right infrastructure and having the proper infrastructure to bring events into. We have wonderful infrastructure, both in our public buildings, but also in our schools. We partner greatly with them. It's availability of that at times. And so it's continuing to look at what infrastructure we we need to bring more events into town. So part of that is building a sports tourism facility master plan, working with community partners around that. What work is already being done? How can we all work together and carry some of that weight? The trails connectivity is a huge one. We know the county is directly involved in ensuring that trails connectivity is happening, and then, you know, having more events around trail opportunities. Rectangle or flat fields was, was mentioned, the destination asset study that was done in 2016. We did a study ourselves and identified that we need these fields to complement the many sports that occur on them. And proof can just be seen in what the work we've done with Diamond Sports Fields. We've got a natural resource running through our city and our county that other communities don't have, and that's the Grand River. We've hosted U.S. Rowing Masters Nationals twice. There are many high school regattas and college regattas that happen. How do we expand that infrastructure to have more regattas and show ourselves as, you know, truly a destination around that? Pickleball, the soccer stadium, you know, certainly when we talk about the soccer stadium and recently, we've been pulled into that conversation. When you talk how many home games may occur, the facility is there for an opportunity to bring other events into. And our team has worked with ASM Global to begin to form that list and look at the impact it could have. And then our own campaign. We built out the Meyer Sports Complex in 2012. It's had the impact that I showed you annually, and because of that impact, we know there's there's more opportunity that exists. So we're in a winning streak campaign to do some expansion and improvements to the existing complex in northern Kent County. And so we're excited to be at nearly 80% of our goal. It's an $11.4 million project goal, but as we see in many construction campaigns, that cost creeps up. So, you know, we feel that we've got a strategy to make it to the finish line. This was part of the Kent County ARPA process, and we appreciate you seeing us as a viable program to invest in. And, you know, we have done that and will continue to and continue to have that impact. This is the championship baseball field the kids love to play on. We see comments all the time in our threads on social media about these families that are coming and visiting. And Aquinas makes this their their home field, and so we're able to accommodate their needs. But, you know, beautiful field now with synthetic turf that expands our shoulder seasons and our capability. So with that, thank you for this opportunity, Chair and Commissioners, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mike. Questions? Commissioner Buden.
Chair Stack, thanks, Mike, for the great presentation. I'm aware that Michigan Special Olympics is expanding on the south side of the county. And what is the relationship between your organization and Special Olympics? Because I believe with what they're doing, they are also going to be adding to the sport tourism by bringing in people from all over the country to come to this brand-new facility, which is going to be phenomenal from what I hear.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. And that's exactly the relationship. It's about sports tourism. So Tim Heileman, his team and our team have worked closely together to look at opportunities beyond the state and regionally and nationally. They're being, building a national destination for Special Olympics. Even our state games, you know, we've, it's all about all ages, all abilities. We've had some Special Olympians participate in our games, but they really, they lead the effort around Special Olympics and they're athletes. And we want to partner with them to ensure that that we are a destination for Special Olympics. So it's a great relationship, and they lead the way, and we'll support however we can.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Mike, you've done a great job. And it just occurred to me that when you guys first started, I was 16, that's when I first came on, so I've kind of watched this grow. And I had a lot of questions going into it because this is fairly new to this area. And you have been the perfect choice to run that organization.
Thank you.
Your professionalism, your vision, just, you're just an easy guy to get along with. And
Tell my wife that.
Well, I know. Yeah, yeah.
She's watching, isn't she?
But between you and Doug and just everything you guys have done, and I'm going to miss your presentations, because this will be the last time I get to hear one of your presentations. But as somebody that's had history with you guys, I've seen you bring to the table the things that you said you were going to bring to the table. And you're, I'm sure it wasn't always 100% worked out exactly, but you guys have done such a wonderful job here in Kent County.
Thank you.
And you brought a lot of things that I had questions about. I didn't necessarily see these visions, but even the 10-mile property, what you did with that, it's an old dump, and what are you going to do with an old dump? And it's just beautiful. And I just wanted to thank you and Doug and your organizations for everything you've done. And I hope you continue the trajectory and while keeping in mind what we want to do here in Kent County, there's, it can't all be fun and entertainment. We need, you know, kind of a balance between housing and farmland and everything else. But I just really appreciate your work, and I just wanted to thank you for that, so.
Well, thank you, and truly thank this body. You saw the vision of what it could be, maybe with some apprehension, but, you know, certainly the numbers speak for themselves. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstly.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Mike, thanks for being here. I don't, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to thank you for your support of adaptive sports in this area. I know Mary Freebed is at the front and center of a lot of this. I work with a couple of people that are on the Pacers wheelchair basketball team, and I know a lot of the families on the sled wings. And it's just, it's incredible to see what we've done and your support behind them and encouragement and your work to try to bring more adaptive sports to the area is, you know, remarkable. And it's a sector that's often overlooked in news media and coverage and that, but thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'm on the board of the West Michigan Miracle League, and that is situated in the property that we have at Meyer Sports Complex to give those athletes that opportunity. So very, very pleased to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. In our invocation this morning, I was talking about an organization that equips and empowers youth to become leaders, and I do see the Sports Commission as being really helpful in that process of bringing our youth along so that they will lead us in the next, the next generations. I would like to have you talk more, though, about the interaction you see as developing between this proposed soccer stadium and the Sports Commission, and how that will interact for us in the community.
Yeah, two ways. Anytime that a destination brings a professional sport team in, you raise the landscape and the perspective of your destination externally. And that's our focus between Experienced Grand Rapids ourselves, it's marketing this destination, and doing it with, in partnership, our pro teams. And then infrastructure is key. I touched on that, having, you know, professional buildings. And, you know, I'll talk to Rich and Rick about access to, you know, Van Andel Arena a little bit more. It just speaks to how well they're doing. But, you know, certainly, when you've got facilities of that magnitude, it offers opportunities. And on non-soccer dates, we've identified two dozen immediate opportunities. In fact, we've been approached by organizations that are asking, you know, is it done yet? Well, you know, it's, it's a proposed project still that has, doesn't have a shovel on the ground yet. But, but it's exciting to hear that because it will elevate our community and bring more opportunity. We saw it around Van Andel Arena with the development of businesses that have occurred with the action and excitement that occurs whenever anything's going on down there. So I think the same thing will happen.
Okay, Commissioner Brivey.
Thank you, Chair. As a board member, I have the opportunity to serve on the West Michigan Sports Commission with, along with Commissioner Teal. And I'm kind of in a unique position because I also spend a lot of time at youth sports. So one of my boys plays weekly at the Meyer Sports Complex, and the other is on a travel soccer team. So it's either a diamond or a rectangle field that I'm on. And so the unique position is I get to see how other parents interact and how they experience the Meyer Sports Complex, and I also overhear a lot of really amazing things. So we have a beautiful facility. I've also been to a lot of facilities that are subpar. So it's exciting to be able to use that and to show that off to our community. And I think, you know, like our airport is a gateway to the community. I think the sports complex is in many ways, too. And it allows us to tell a story of the wonderful things that we can do through sport here in Kent County. So that's definitely a huge asset to people, and they come from all over the state outside of Michigan as well. So we have an asset, and we need to continue to support and maintain that. And I love the thought that we do need more rectangular fields. I see that, you know, if you go by Brewer Park on a Saturday, it is booked from, you know, sunrise to sundown, it seems like, and, you know, many other parks around here, too. So there's definitely a high need, and I will, you know, support down the road the future when we need to acquire those fields and, you know, happy to help wherever I can. So I appreciate the work and your team, you and your team are doing. It's definitely an awesome group of people that are looking out and doing the best they can for our community. So, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your service on our board, and more so, thank you for spending money at the Meyer Sports Complex.
You know, I like a good hot dog every now and then.
Yeah, the language in the proposed ballot on August 6th does speak to sports complexes. And while, you know, we've got some major projects to accomplish that will move the needle and have a great impact, my hope is that we could work together on sports complexes because of the impact that we've seen at the Meyer Sports Complex. So thank you.
All right, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here, Mike, first of all. To kind of follow up a little bit on Commissioner Hennessy's question, I think I read recently that there was some type of agreement or some conversations that have begun or have happened between the Sports Commission. And I think it was conversations around the soccer stadium, either that or the amphitheater. I can't really remember. And specifically in regards to the process for how, the process and policies, procedures for how community members will be able to use those facilities. And I believe, again, can't remember if it was based off of that article or just between that and the prior questions that I've asked here, that the process and procedure would be very similar to that that is currently set up for the Van Andel Arena. And I was curious to see if you all could elaborate more on what that looks like for if a community member anywhere in the county wanted to use the facilities, what that looks like.
Yeah, you know, just a quick correction, Commissioner. It wasn't about community use, unfortunately. As we look at the potential of the lodging tax being a component of the funding to build the facility, it was really more so in our work to bring visitors into the community and fill those holes. and fill those hotels. So that it was around a booking policy that already exists around convention business, and how do we fill, how do we layer in or fill the best business that's going to fill our hotels and build up the lodging tax? Now, I will say it there's a community component to it, meaning, okay, let's look outside a span of time of when the lead time is to book events that are going to bring visitors into our community. And inside that time, you know, it should be open to to community organizations that that fill the requirements of utilizing whatever that facility might be. We see that in the convention center. It certainly is utilized by community groups and community events that draw community in. And then it's also used for conventions as well as sports.
Yeah. Yeah, I think these, again, as I've said in the past, these projects definitely represent amazing opportunities. I just think that, you know, as with many things, the devil is in the details, as they say, as far as how how that's implemented. I for one know that, you know, at the very edge of District 20, right in front of where the big hundreds of apartments are going to be built at Factory Yards, the field at not Cesar Chavez, at Clemente Park, is filled every weekend. And so I know that there would be definitely a lot of good opportunities to have community members, these amateur leagues that have been around for decades, to use these spaces, I think would benefit everyone. So looking forward to hearing about that more in the future. My last question, I really should have asked this for the to the last two presenters as well, but to get your thoughts on what a potential reform in Lansing might mean for areas. There are some conversations happening around reforming the SOAR fund, potentially investing $6 billion over 10 years into the state. So to give a little bit of details, and these are still being worked out, there would be, among other things, $2 billion for trends and mobility, $1 billion for housing and community for housing and community development fund to build affordable housing, $500 million to the revitalization and place-making fund to support projects such as childcare. So if that is something that ended up happening, you know, there's some details being worked on, worked out on, you know, how much money to give here and there. But if that amount of investment really happened at Lansing, what would be the impact for Kent County?
Oh, I, you know, obviously, it'd be terrific. Commissioner Antor, you know, pointed out your this body needs to consider many different initiatives that are going to raise our county. And it's far beyond economic impact and the work that we do. And so, you know, we need a healthy community also to thrive and for people to see it as a place to to visit, to live, to work, and to play. So I think any kind of development like that that's going to answer the challenges that that we all see and that we all want to find solutions towards. You know, our focus is around being an economic generator and looking at at growing our economy. And I think that plays a specific part. You know, when I look at other states that have funds, but the funds are really more specific to our work of driving the economy, you know, they they do quite well. So my expectation is if we had a fund that that answered, you know, the housing challenges, workforce development, and other issues, you know, we know that we need those dollars and investing them in in programs that work to grow our region. So, yeah, I think it sounds wonderful. It's outside my wheelhouse, but certainly would do a lot to help us promote this destination as the great destination that it is.
Great. And I've spoken to one state rep from the R area, who, again, that's not moved forward yet, but who was concerned about whether that money was going to all go out towards the east side or the west side. So looking forward to seeing what happens with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. And again, thank you, Mike, for your presentation. Obviously, thank you and your crew that are here today for all the hard work you've done on behalf of the county. So appreciate it. All right, we'll move to the next item, which is public comment. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that wants to address, please address us only with respect to agenda items at this point. You'll have another chance later in this meeting to address us on general jurisdiction matters. So thank you. I don't see anyone from the public on that issue.
Mr. Chair, I do have a card for a member of the public comment on an agenda item.
Okay, well, I have a stand-up. You're going to make this an agenda item.
This is on this is the card.
Oh, all right. We just have a tight agenda. That's why I'm pressing a little bit. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Stack, Commissioners, staff, and fellow citizens. Again, my name is Daniel Scott, longtime resident of the county, but more importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you for that invocation through the Brother Carol. By the way, your name means a song of joy, like Christmas Carol. I'm addressing what we've been hearing about, the fiscal expenditures that you're considering to spend our tax money. I propose that instead of spending it on these shiny objects like an amphitheater, a new soccer stadium, aquarium, how about saving the money or giving it back to the taxpayers or use it to prepare for this upcoming economic crash? This economic crash is coming to our nation, to our state, to our county, to our city. We cannot sustain trillions and trillions and trillions of dollars of debt. Do your research. Every nation's society before us has crashed because of this mounting debt. liken this to the Great Depression, liken this to what happened through that man-made plague we called COVID. Many people could not work. Can you envision this being the time because of this economic crash, the same circumstances? Many would have no value of these new proposed items. People cannot pay their taxes, including your salaries. If it came to citizens having to decide to feed their families or pay their taxes, guess which choice they would make? If these funds are burning a hole in your pockets, proverbial pockets, I would suggest that you do what this great man of God did in ancient Egypt 2,000 years before Christ. Joseph, who was told beforehand that there was a coming seven-year famine. He was a politician, but also a slave. He warned the Pharaoh of Egypt to store for this coming famine. I would encourage you to store items like this, water, canned goods that do not perish in some of these vacant large buildings. Store these up now. Spend the money on storing the food and water so when this perilous times come, we can really help the poor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, if there is no one else, then we'll move to the next item, consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Can I move to base consent agenda?
All right, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Burl? Questions or comments on the consent agenda? I don't see any. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
DeBoer.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Bujak.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. I'll note that you have a packet in front of you that is a confidential set of minutes that those need to be turned back into counsel after the meeting, of course, or pass them back in at this point. All right, well, now move to our resolutions and pursuant to the modification in the agenda that I announced earlier, I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move the adoption of Resolution 80, Administrator-Controller Employment Agreement from the Board of Commissioners.
Is there support?
Support.
There is support. All right, open it up. Any questions or comments on this motion? Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting against this, but kind of the reasons are really a lengthy and nuanced conversation. And so I'm happy to have that conversation with any anybody who's interested in in my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stack. So I just want to, I mean, this is the renewal of the agreement with our county administrator. And I've known Al since I was a city council member. Al's work in the community, his willingness to reach out and work with people, help the citizens learn more about what good government looks like and does. And I've never seen a person that's worked as hard as Al to to build relationships and to make sure that not only the places where he's worked, but definitely Kent County, to continue to be the beacon that a lot of people look to. So Al, I want to thank you.
Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair. I, you know, also echo Commissioner Ponstein's statements. Every conversation I've been in with Al and others in the community, I've seen his ability to talk through things, to address concerns and issues and understand and to help come alongside people, and so we're all on the same page. I've seen that on many occasions. And I think, you know, Al, as our county administrator, we all can learn something from him. He's served the community very well in many capacities. He is highly thought of and well-respected throughout the county administrator organizations, the national organizations as well. I think it's pretty awesome that we get to have him here and get to work alongside him. So there's been, I think anytime I've had an issue or concern, the best thing I've been able to do is talk directly to him and work through things. And I think, you know, we've come to lots of good conclusions, and he's got many great ideas. And I always think Al's, you know, interest is in serving Kent County in the best way possible and continuing to make Kent County great. And I think we all have the same goal, too, here, serving our residents. So I look forward to supporting this contract and working with Al through the rest of my term.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I would echo what has been said so far from Commissioner Ponstein and Commissioner Brevi. I just have some questions about the actual, a few things that were in the contract, specifically the change from the part of the contract, I don't think it's in the summary of the agreement, but it was changed from needing 2/3 majority to a simple majority. And I would just like to get some information in terms of how that how we arrived at that.
I'll ask the administrator to respond to that.
So under the Controller Act in Michigan, to remove a controller takes a 2/3 vote of the Board of Commissioners. From going from a three-year term to a two-year plus a two-year renewal, automatic renewal, there is a 60-day period before the automatic renewal, which the Board could take up my contract and vote whether to allow the automatic renewal to occur or not. So the discussion
Or to stop it from occurring.
Or to stop it from occurring. And so that little piece, the question, is it 2/3 or is it simple majority? And that little piece would be simple majority.
So I don't know that that actually answered my question in terms of how we got to that, but I understand where, you know, what the law says. But I also would like to just comment on kind of how we got to the contract itself. I am I'm going to support the contract because I think that Al is doing the best job that he can for Kent County. And I think I'm impressed by the relationships that have been renewed and strengthened as part of the process that he's gone through since being here in Kent County as the control as the administrator. What I'm not very happy with is the process that was used to get to this contract language. I do think that it should have been more inclusive of everyone on this board. I think that it should have been something where we were able to provide some input. We got this contract in the language late last night before we had a chance to actually have conversations about it. Again, I'm going to support the renewal because I think that, again, Al's doing a great job, but I am questioning the process. And I think that many people are questioning the process. And so, you know, I think that what I've heard over the course of especially this year is that we need to be more open and transparent and inclusive of everybody on this board when we are making major decisions. And I don't think that that happened here. We should have had more than 12 hours to review this. We should have had an opportunity to provide more input and insight into what terms were included in here. We should have had an explanation that we could have provided some input on in terms of whether that simple majority or 2/3 should have been adjusted. And so I just want to voice that right now. Again, I'm going to support it because, again, I think that Al's doing a great job, but I do want to bring the process that was used to craft this contract to light so that everyone understands that we got this contract last night.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Hildebrand was next.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I've been on the Board a year and a half now and appreciated getting to work with Al and getting to know Al. I think he's doing an excellent job. He brings a lot of value and experience to this county from his past experiences. He's dedicated to the work here. He's well-connected in the community and invested in what's going on here. The contract, you know, is not perfect in my mind, the proposal before us. It's not easy serving 21 board members as a as an administrator. And I think we've we all have, you know, ways that we would like to work with Al differently or maybe suggest how Al handles things. But overall, serving 21 people is a difficult task, and I think he's managed that well. There's talk about a three-year contract, a one-year contract. I think a good middle ground is the two-year contract before us. There's talk to Commissioner McLeod's points that she raised about, you know, should it be automatically renewed? Should it automatically come before this board? Should it be a 2/3 vote or a simple majority vote? I think all the input was taken, and the product before us is a pretty good middle ground. So I I'll be supporting the resolution before us, and I look forward to moving beyond this and continuing the great work of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks, did you have any? Okay. Commissioner Sparks.
I did. Thank you, Chair. I have to echo the sentiments of Commissioner McLeod. She is our minority vice chair. We all voted for her for this position. And it appears to me, time and time again, we're getting these documents late, we're getting the documents right before the meeting. This particular contract is very important. There are 1,700 people that Al will have to lead, 1,700 employees for Kent County. Plus, as Commissioner Hildenbrand said, we need to, you know, come to a consensus for 21 of us. Al has been doing a phenomenal job, in my opinion. When I look at the administration before, I don't see as much movement. Now we see movement in our community. We see collaborations that are happening in our community that we hadn't had before. So you all know how hard it is to find an administrator. It's not like it was just some easy process. So I just want us to make sure that as we are looking at different contracts, resolutions, and things like that, that we are inclusive of all of us commissioners, and especially for the Democrats, because Michelle Commissioner McLeod is our minority vice chair. And it's only fair for her to get the documents and have input so that she could come to consent so that we can all come to consensus together so we're not here in public being vulnerable. When she does not get that information, because someone else wants to keep and control the information until it's decimated, it makes all of us vulnerable. Our job is to make sure that we have the right, proper information to vote every time and be transparent. And I do not feel like this was a transparent process. I do not feel that this process serves all of us.
I don't feel that she is included the way she should be. I do feel that Commissioner Wooden was included, but I do not see her being included the same way that he was. So I really would appreciate if you take those points into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Baker was next.
Yeah, first of all, I'm very, my engagement in the community and everywhere I go, people highly respect the work that Administrator Vanderberg is doing. And he is engaged. So I absolutely support this, and I'm happy that he's happy with this contract. Commissioner Hildbrand used the phrase, "There was talk. There were discussions of a two-year contract, a one-year contract, a three-year contract. However, input was gathered and a consensus was made, but not with any of the Democrats." So we were talking about, and to some extent, what that means is not that the administrator works for 21 people, but that he works for 12. I was on the school board for many years. Many, several legislators in this room were a part, former legislators in this room were a part of creating very rigorous superintendent evaluations that were inclusive of the entire board to review and to hire. And yet, in this room, which has at least as much consequence as a superintendent, we were able to have these discussions. There was a contract pulled from our last meeting without engagement from the Democrats. There were discussions. There were also discussions about what Democrats thought about Al Vanderberg without including a discussion with any of the Democrats. So we are at this point right now that I would hope that in the future, the commissioner, the administrator works for 21 people and that 21 people are engaged in evaluating and hiring that process. And this is the, this is the most important position we have one employee. And it should not be the discussion and negotiation and input and consensus gathering of 12.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with those before me that have echoed Al's appreciation. We're very fortunate here in Kent County to have Al's expertise at the helm for our really large and complicated organization. Al, you're a thoughtful, sorry, Mr. Chair. Al is a thoughtful, inclusive, and engaged leader. And he's a well-respected member of the public service community. We're better off for having him, and I'm in support of this contract. I do concur with my colleagues' frustrations on the process. They've said it incredibly well. So the only thing that I have to add is that we really do a disservice to our board and to our residents when decisions are made behind closed doors. We, as board members, have to have opportunities to prepare for meetings. And getting pieces of information 12 hours before the meeting starts is just unacceptable. To us, it's unacceptable to our constituents, and it's really a disservice to our community. The final thing I'll say is that I've been supervising in my role at Grand Valley for the past seven years. I've supervised a lot of folks, some successfully, some unsuccessfully. As a board, we're responsible for the active supervision for our county administrator. And one thing that I know to be true across the board, not just our board, but the sort of bigger board, is that without appropriate communication to those that we supervise about performance, expectations, dissatisfaction, supervisors are ineffective. We do a disservice to those that we supervise. So I hope that we keep that in mind as we go forward, that it's really, really important for us to make sure that we are having honest and open communication with those that we supervise as a board, because otherwise it's just a sort of a conversation that doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo the previous comments because, you know, like many on this board, I got the final draft of this contract last evening. And, you know, I am planning to vote for it. I support extending Administrator Vanderberg's contract. I think he's done a phenomenal job. I think, if anything, as I look to it, I would stress that it may be a good idea, in fact, I won't say maybe, it would be a good idea to formalize the renewal process in our standing rules. We have systems in place to do that. We have an executive committee that certainly could be part of that process. And I want to make sure that if, you know, we've had instances where drafts are changed and evolved over time, and a final version is given to this board in shorter notice. And, but in those processes, the ebbs and flows and changes have been communicated more regularly. And I certainly understand that things like this can evolve over time. And it's absolutely, I'm not trying to fault any member of this staff or board leadership on this. I'm simply stressing that, given what we're facing right now, I would suggest that putting a process in our standing rules is, that allows a broad representation of the entire board would alleviate this in the future. And with that, I will just reiterate, I have every intent to vote for this contract. I will be voting for this contract, and I appreciate Administrator Vanderberg for all his work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo Vice Chair McCleod's comments. You know, I, we constantly see Congress, for example, doing stuff at the last minute or doing stuff in the middle of the night. We saw last night Lansing passing bills at 4:00 in the morning. I think we need to do our best to be as transparent as possible. I think I'm going to agree with those that have said, commented on Administrator Vanderberg's work. I think he does an amazing job. But there are at least four of us that are not going to be here next year. And I would like to speak for those commissioners who will be here moving forward as far as the processes that are taken to make some of these decisions. I, along with others that have already commented, received some of these materials last night. And just given my year and a half of experience on this board, I'm starting to believe that it's not so much decisions or things that happen because of what the administration or certain employees want to do, but because what certain board members are deciding should happen in the order that it should happen. So I will be voting yes for this contract. I think, again, that some of those have, what some of those have already said, everywhere that I go, I hear about the work that Al has done, that Al is doing, the relationship that he has built. I don't think now is a time for us to go looking for a new administrator. I hope that Al will continue, will choose to stay in Kent County for as long as he would like to keep working. But yeah, just like to reiterate that I think some of the ways that this board is operating, the ways that it has been operating, need to be changed. And hopefully, the commissioners that are here next year will begin some of that work, beginning with the standing rules. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I was, I was really pleased. It was a privilege to be on the board that hired Administrator Vanderberg because that is such a big step in any county administration, that we, making a hire of that magnitude. So it was really great to be part of that process. And I feel that we made a great choice. And all we have to do is look to our neighbors to the west in Ottawa County to see how badly that can go. But I will say that when I get a contract 12 hours before a meeting and ask for my review, it doesn't feel like it's my review. It just feels like it's my rubber stamp. And that doesn't feel good. That feels insulting. And given that this board, this is a very big decision for us. It's a very, it's momentous. It's the kind of thing that makes you tempted to vote no, which I'm not going to do. But asking for my rubber stamp is, at the 12 hours, is not great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Hennessy.
As part of the small but really hard-working committee that chose the last two administrators, I will say that is a very tough area to find a good competent person for. And we certainly found that with Al Vanderberg. And I will stand behind the choice and will stand forward for voting for this contract again. But I do agree with the comments and the reservations that have been stated by the other Democrats on this board. The process among ourselves and the transparency could stand some improvement. But I'm very, I'm very pleased with the decisions we made a few years ago and stand by it now.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there is no one else, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 80, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Pahnstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCleod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 80 is adopted.
Thank you very much. For our next item, which is on the original agenda as 9A, now 9B, I will call on Commissioner McCleod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 77 of today's date. The property development rights grant and contributions from the Norman property coming to us from the administrator's office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't look at this until quite late, and I didn't get a chance to look into the actual location of this property. It has a legal description, and I didn't see anywhere where the property is located as far as township and so on and so forth.
Mark Rambo is here to answer that question.
The property is in Algoma Township. It's the first one in Algoma Township, and it's located on Pine Island Drive, north of 14 Mile.
It'll be the first property that entered into the program from Algoma?
In Algoma.
Okay. And then my other question is, you know, part of, I think, the original scoring criteria was it's really important to have properties that are contiguous with other protected property. So you start to build, you know, instead of islands all over, you're starting to build a block. Has, and you may not know this, because you're fairly new to this, but I remember the original scoring criteria when this first started. I'm just wondering, has there been any significant changes from the original scoring as to how we prioritize these properties that you're aware of?
I'd have to look back at the original. I know the scoring criteria has remained the same for the last couple of years. And we can pull that out and reset that.
Especially about the, being contiguous is important. How close that property is to possible development, the land itself, how viable it is for ag. I guess I should have been better immersed in that over the years. I used to serve on that board, and I wasn't sure what all the changes were. So if you could dig around and maybe, son, maybe this entire board, and perhaps, Chair, we could kind of go back and look at this issue again. We have a lot of new commissioners that may not understand these things because this is a pretty important program. And I think it'd be a good idea to maybe educate some people on how and why we do this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted. All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 77, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Antor, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Merchant. DeBoer.
No.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Pahnstein.
Yes.
Burl. Coleman.
No.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCleod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 77 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I have a call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution 78 of today's date, a resolution to appropriate dollars to the South Clinic Remodel Capital Improvement Program. It comes to us from the Health Department.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. It just says "South Clinic", and I think I know where the South Clinic is. Is this the one in Kentwood? It used to be a library? Okay, so that is where it is. I think I just answered my own question. Thanks.
Okay. I like that when that happens. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 78, Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Pahnstein.
Yes.
Burl. Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks. McCleod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Chair, or Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 78 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to the next item, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the adoption of Resolution 79, fiscal year 2023 Homeland Security Grant and Budget Amendment from the Sheriff's Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by someone over here. Commissioner Wooden? Questions or comments? Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have the sheriff here or someone who can answer questions about this?
That grocer will do that.
One of my questions is, is this, this is going to be a new position, I take it? Or are we, is this a renewal of some sort? Do we already have someone doing this work?
Yeah, so this is the annual Homeland Security Grant that does pay for a portion of two of our employees' salaries, but it also pays for equipment purchases such as, like this year, there's some bomb team equipment so that they can handle suspicious devices and that type of thing locally. Some other, you know, projects, I've got a list here as well, but.
Well, yeah, I was curious. I was going to ask, what is the equipment part of it? So that's the sort of thing, what, I'm just curious what Homeland Security equipment involves.
So each, each year, generally, we get right around 200,000 to 250,000. It's going down by about $10,000 per year. And then this year, it diminished quite a bit. But, you know, just a list of, some of the proposed projects right now are securing some equipment to help the Grand Rapids Police Bomb Team. There's also a drone detection device. So we all know that there's a lot of drones and things out there. This will help us identify if there are drones operating maybe near a special event and that type of thing that we need to pay attention to. There's some communications equipment that's on here for the EOC and that type of thing. So it's, in the past, we've done like bulletproof vests for fire departments now that they are partnering with police to try to help with active shooter incidents and that type of thing. I mean, I could probably come up with a lot of different projects. But that's basically the flavor. It is an annual thing ever since, I want to say, 2006.
Okay. And you say that that amount is going down. Is there a year at which you expect it to approach zero? Or will there be some federal renewal where we might see more funds?
We can't really predict exactly when it's going to go to zero. My thought is it may, you know, those dollars might get redirected as it starts kind of moving in that direction. But what I will say is that we took a 10% cut. And then the way that it gets administered throughout the state, the state took a little bit before it actually got distributed down to the county level. So it was actually more than a 10%, closer to an 18%, 19% cut this year for us. So it's a bit of a moving target. It's definitely heading in the downward direction. But that's, it's basically, I think we're right around 220,000 this year.
Great. Thank you so much for that information.
All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. It was just, in this language, it said the money's supposed to be used to prevent, to respond to and recover from incidents of national significance, including but not limited to threats and incidents of terrorism. That's kind of a narrow.
Sure is.
Yes. And with your budget issues that you currently have, is there any chance of, you know, you may not fit some of that.[1734.81] know, you may not fit some of that. Is there any, how can you spend them? Does it have to fall within those strict parameters, or can you use it for something you really maybe need more?
So from a very general perspective, as the dollar amount is diminishing, the requirement to stay railroaded to a terrorism nexus, that enforcement is increasing. And so we've had a lot of projects denied recently that were too broad. It had to be more focused towards terrorism. So I will say that that is way beyond our control. That's a, at a federal level, that's happening, and, you know, every county in the country is going through that same level of enforcement.
I just make the point, it reminds me of our DDBG funding where it's very narrow application. A lot of communities, they get it to build projects they don't really need just to use the funding. And I hate tax dollars when you use that way. I wish we could use that money in something you need right now, and everything's for public safety.
One thing I can add to that, the way that we're using the planning dollars, which is one of the, it's actually the largest dollar amount every year. We actually have two employees that are, you know, being partially funded based on that.
Okay.
The reason we're doing that is so that we can use those employees and their expertise for other things as well. So there's a lot of emergency planning that we need to do throughout the community. As long as we keep ourselves to terrorism only being fifty percent of that, we can utilize that person for the, you know, for other emergency planning efforts as, as part of what the Emergency Management Unit needs. Same is true with the Training and Exercise Coordinator. We can have that person train a little bit outside of that scope.
Good deal. Well, listen, I really appreciate you guys and support you a hundred percent, and I'm glad you're able to get as creative as you can to keep us safe. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. This, this item honestly presents a little bit of a challenge for me. On the one hand, the more ideological side of me feels some sense of hesitance when it comes to law enforcement, just because I, I believe that our society needs to be doing more when it comes to really deciding when law enforcement needs to be addressing a situation and where other investments need to be made, specifically in regards to education, healthcare, housing, whatnot. To be honest, the fact that these funds, it appears to be, are much more, and especially over time, are being much more targeted to addressing issues like potential terrorist situations and other large-scale situations makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. So I would be voting yes on this item, but I think I just wanted to mention and speak to the changes that really need to happen, really at a bigger, or rather, in other levels of government in regards to the investments that we are making, where we're making them, and what type of society we want to have in the future. And then just as an aside, I believe at our last legislative and human resources meeting, I mentioned some recent events that have happened in our communities and my desire to speak with the sheriff. The sheriff did give me a call the next day, and we had a long and lengthy conversation. And so I really wanted to just mention that, really thank her for that conversation, and I look forward to having a follow-up conversation with her in the future and then discussing that with you all here. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. So we've had this grant, it sounds like, for quite some time, and how, just percentage-wise, like, how often do we have to deploy the teams to do, that are, you know, the, the team that's been created because of these dollars? Like, are there, in terms of national security events, like, it's narrow, but does this team ever get deployed? And if so, like, how often does this happen, or are the supplies just sitting there for years and years and years?
So this grant doesn't really create a special team, per se. It supports teams that already exist. And so to that end, like, the Grand Rapids Bomb Team, I'm sure, you know, operates regularly. We sat through a presentation recently where they deal with everything up to and including finding, you know, spent cannonballs in the river over here. And when somebody finds one of those and they bring it out of the river, it's like, what do we do with this? So they send the trailer down, the equipment down, and make sure that it's, you know, taken care of properly so that nobody gets hurt. Artifacts from Army surplus and that type of thing that people find in estate sales is another big one that they respond to. So, you know, yes, it's there as an asset to respond if we were to have something that we thought had a, you know, terrorism nexus to it, but it also has a day-to-day purpose for, you know, making unknown substances inert as well. And there's, you know, and again, that's just one of the teams that we support. There's a lot of hazardous material, stuff that we focus on, a lot of detection equipment, like radiological detection for any type of nuclear concerns or radiation concerns that we may have out there. So, I mean, the list goes on and on, and every year, the projects can change. The Presidential Administration can come out with priorities, and they do so every year, that kind of direct where some of that money needs to be spent, both at the regional level within Region Six in Michigan, and then at the local level then as well.
And our sheriff has stepped in for some additional comment. Good morning.
I think a couple of the questions, they kind of channeled this to make it seem like these are, you know, very isolated-use pieces of equipment, and that just frankly isn't the truth. This is equipment that we've accumulated over time. The process creates a collaboration that generates teams that work together to do a broader mission beyond what the Sheriff's Department does or the City of Grand Rapids does. It forces coordination of special equipment that's now available community-wide. Like, our command bus that you see often on these major scenes was initially a purchase in this twenty years ago. We still use it in almost every community event or critical incident that happens throughout the county. Armored vehicles have been part of this grant in different times that are used to secure multiple scenes, and the bomb equipment is probably the, the biggest example of a resource that frankly wasn't available for ten or fifteen hours at a time if there was some kind of suspicious, suspicious, I can't speak, suspicious things found in a building that we had to evacuate the building and lock it down and wait for like fifteen hours. So this equipment has been well-placed in our community, and I, and I understand the broader concept of should this grant money, but for every community in the nation, it's created an opportunity to buy stuff that makes the entire nation more secure. So we can't think of it as just these isolated, narrow things for Kent County. It's a broader blanket of equipment that then is available for a broader response. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call as well. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy-nine, Commissioners Green, or Vice Chair Green, excuse me.
Yes.
Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl. Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution seventy-niner is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item ten, which is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board on general jurisdiction matters, you may do so at this time. You have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself, and good morning.
How are you guys doing? I am that cool visionary that Mike was speaking on, Dee Jones. First of all, I'm just happy and thankful to be alive. I wanted to show you guys this flyer. I was here at Executive Committee earlier. Going to spin around and do a clip three sixty for y'all. So this flyer here is a flyer for this production that we shot in Detroit called Gamers. So I first started with a thousand-dollar esports competition that was on a nice board here. If you didn't see the Jump Ahead NBA 2K Esports Competition, that was the first competition I actually ever did for our community. That led me to be the Vice President of a Detroit organization called Play Esports, where we have our own app. We have an energy drink, we have a facility, and we had this production that was sponsored by the large pop company Faygo. And so I helped with the creative process of this. Here goes our esports energy drink that we have. It's going to be a billion-dollar product one day. I got a global vision, and on my birthday, the CEO is going to give me complete creative control to be able to go after this global vision I have. So he told me that was my birthday present, and I'll take that because I was born in poverty. I didn't expect to have things like this, and I'm going to get a lot of people out of poverty. I'm going to do a lot of cool things. I'm going to develop equitable, good, diverse careers and jobs across the planet one day. And when I build in those other countries, I'll be sure to be sure that we don't give them the bare minimum, that we give them the best that we can give, because a lot of these big companies in the United States expand globally, and they don't treat those other people in those other countries right. And I want to be at an ethical standard. I believe I'm already an ethical standard, but I'm just going to boost the standards. And so me being the person that lives in Kent County, I'm very excited to have this production because it's going to be a cool production, and it's going to inspire a lot of people. And Ferris State University is actually the only college in our state that actually has an esports production degree. So I'm going to be doing some cool stuff with Ferris State University around this production that we shot in Detroit, and I'm just very excited. I mean, esports is a three-hundred-billion-dollar industry, and like I said, I'm going to get a piece of that. I believe I can help that actually grow. I believe I can help the industry grow. I believe innovators and broad thinkers and people who have broadened horizons. I believe that you should think like that. If you feel like you can do it and you're good enough, I believe I can push the limits of three-hundred-billion-dollar industry. I believe I can do that. I believe here in Kent County, we could bring a seven-figure esports competition, but we need Kent County support. We need all of the Board support. It can't just be the Sports Commission. It can't just be Dee Jones. It has to be the Board too, because we have the opportunity for people to get paid a six-figure career. We already have Detroit, which is the largest city with the, one of the largest populations of African-Americans, and then we have GR, which is the second-tier city for economic development. That can show ethical standards across the United States, our state. So very excited for these cool things I'm going to be doing. Thank you.
You still have a second left. All right. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this time to be able to talk. My name is Melanie Drofsky. I'm from the City of Grand Rapids, and I'm here to touch on the current hotel tax before us on the ballot in August, and it is to bring out some transparency and some information. And as some of you just spoke on transparency, how it's important to all of us and to get the information before the twelfth hour. So in relation to the marketing that is coming out, three hundred and fifty thousand being spent on the Hemholt campaign here, this just recently came out, but at the kickoff of this event, TV eight had a five-second short blip on the, the day of the kickoff. They didn't state the allocation. They didn't state the time, so I called the County Administration Office to find this information out. I wanted to attend. I was told that it was not a public event, and for any information, to reach out to Josh Lundberg in the chamber. So I just started doing my own investigation. Well, cool projects do come at cool costs, and first of all, at face value of these projects, I support them at face value. But everything isn't face value. There's always things behind it you have to consider. So with the cool projects, there are many counties across the country that have changed and diversified how they're spending this hotel tax funding. They're using it towards infrastructure. They're using it towards housing. Yes, that is being done across the country. So these facilities, when they're built, it will have additional strain on our infrastructure. It will have additional strain with our, our public servants' service. So we, as the taxpayers, will pay that. We all know what the current rate is of this hotel tax. If the voters do pass this, you can move it up to eight, which you stated. The state is at six, and then a four percent special assessment goes to Experian's Grand Rapids. Mr. Wooden, you brought up the fact of the spending, and it's laid in the statute how that can be spent, and it does speak on the tourism advancement of that. So my question is, which you won't answer, is why is a additional four percent given to Experian's Grand Rapids? And yes, Doug Small, you do great work, but why, if the statute allows that spending for advertisement, why do we charge our visitors an additional four percent for funding to go to that avenue? Also, in that language, Section 2A has been added in Bill 5048 that includes local municipalities, if you're not aware, which you should be because you all probably read the bill. So with the language, local municipalities that are in a town, county, that are greater than six hundred thousand, less than seven seventy-five, may assess this excise tax of two percent in addition to the potential eight percent. This would put our county region at twenty percent for our visitors. I don't know about you with your taxes, but I do not believe we need new taxes. I don't believe we need additional taxes. This county is big and beautiful. And Mr., thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Good morning again.
Yeah, I'm still Daniel Scott. I'd encourage you to vote for Melanie. She's running for first ward city commission, if you live in that ward. Okay, we just did remember Juneteenth, the end of black slavery. I'm grateful for that anniversary. By the way, Abraham Lincoln, one of our greatest presidents of all time, who gave his life to free the slaves, was a devout follower of Christ. And maybe you didn't know this, but Wilbur, Wilberforce, who was used in a significant way to end slavery in the UK just shortly before we ended it, he also was a devout follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. You can Google that if you get bored during the rest of my presentation. While there still is slavery of African-Americans in our country, I've mentioned this before, don't just take my word for it, take Martin Luther King Jr.'s word. Quote, "How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted," and I'll change it to "murder baby," "is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother. The mother decides his or her fate." Fifty-four percent of African-Americans believe that, quote, "Planned Parenthood is purposely targeting black people to murder them through abortion," unquote. This is exactly what the founder of Planned Parenthood, Margaret Sanger, said herself. Quote, "We don't want the word to get out that we want to exterminate the Negro population." Quote number two, "They are human weeds, reckless breeders, spawning human beings who never should have been born." Quote number three, "I accepted invitation to talk to the woman's branch of the Ku Klux Klan." Adolf Hitler, do the research, was her good friend? This is the ultimate example of racism. And again, as we stand here and sit here, within a mile or two from where we're sitting and standing, at 425 East Cherry, not only black babies, but white babies are being torn apart limb by limb in their wombs, mothers' wombs, even up to nine months and after because of this Proposal Three that was pushed through out of Lansing. Now the baby is born, and because it was intended to murder the baby in the womb, and they survive, they either strike the back of the neck and suck out the brains and sell the parts, or they allow the baby to starve. That's what's happening at 425 East Cherry. There's still slavery in our city.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so we'll move to the next item of our agenda, which is our Administrator's report.
First, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for your support of my contract. I'm at an interesting point in my life because I'm working because I want to, and I'm working for Kent County because I love my job. I've not ready to retire by any sense of imagination. I, I work, God willing and Commission willing, to the end of my career here. I do get frequent contacts from headhunters across the nation, and I am committed to this county and a lot of the great things that we are working on internal to the organization and external as well. And it always, I do, I really appreciate frank conversation and frank input. So if somebody does have any issues or concerns with how I'm doing my job or concerns with the administration, I think you best serve the county if you just talk to me directly. I'm open to those conversations. Secondly, just wanted to mention that American Legion Auxiliary Girl State is in full swing. We elected a governor last night, and she was sworn in on the steps of the Capitol this morning, and this is the eighty-third year of the Girl State program. So with that, I think I'll, I'll rest.
Okay. Where'd you get that term? We will move then to reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you. I'm reporting out for Commissioner Teal and myself for their early childhood millage review. We have that this week. We think, I don't see our management analyst, Sandra Ghoston-Jones, and everyone who was part of that process, that long process. But we did come to a consensus. I believe we have forty-eight proposals, nine point six million dollars to spend, and we did the best that we could. We had a lot of great proposals on the table, making sure that our children are ready by five, that the parents feel supported while living here in Kent County. I think it's an excellent program, and we're looking forward to the results from it. Thank you.
Thank you, and Boards, thank you to you and Commissioner Teal. I have some sense about how much work that is to do that. It's an incredible effort, so thank you so much for that. Anyone else on our report? If not, we move to miscellaneous. Does anyone have a miscellaneous item? Commissioner Diaz does.
Thank you, Chair. As I mentioned, I believe at our last board meeting,